May I have a motion that we, that the closed meeting be closed if the board certifies to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting to which this certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Senator.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now, if you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we have some recognitions tonight.
Mr. Ritchie and members of the board, tonight we don't have our usual recognitions of student achievement because, of course, we're just coming back in from the summer. But we do have a recognition that I, or an introduction that I would like to make to everyone tonight. I mentioned this at our special meeting in July, and we are very, very pleased that a statewide organization known as the Greater Achievement Scholarship Program has brought us two financial support counselors that will be working with our high school students at Bluestone and at Parkview High Schools. And I've got the ladies here tonight. They have a few things that they will be telling you about the program and telling the public about the program. For Parkview, our representative will be Mrs. Deborah Nguyen, and at Bluestone, our representative will be Mrs. Jenny Spain. And I want to let them stand up and be introduced to the two of you. This is Ms. Jenny Spain coming up first, and Deborah Nguyen behind her. And I don't know who's going to speak for the program, but I will turn the microphone over to you.
We didn't know we were speaking.
Oh, I thought you wanted to go through the talking points.
Well, we're really excited about this program because it gives us an opportunity to work with students that may not have an idea that they can go to college because they can't afford it. And so we'll be practically working with them to help them fill out test forms and read how to do their scholarships and how to read the scholarships once they come back in.
Very much looking forward to being in the community and here to support so many students, and we're really looking forward to it.
Right. And we're certainly glad to have them. I don't know if there are any questions that anybody on the board might have to get started. I think the first time they will be actually engaging the students will be very soon. I don't know exactly what point that is, but then on September, Thursday night of September the 6th, we will be having our college, annual college night. We go back and forth from one high school to the other. Last year it was at Parkview, this year it will be at Bluestone, at the gym at 7:00 o'clock, and they will be there along with Mr. Barry Simmons, who we all know is from Mecklenburg County and has been working with Virginia Tech and universities for a number of years. We will have representatives, again, from College Board there that night. The Community College will have some representatives there to talk about the career coaching and opportunities that are there. And they will be joining us officially sort of that night as a first-time outreach to the, to the schools. So, thank you. Good to see you. And then we'll move on to information items. The first of the information items on our agenda is our grant this year for La Crosse and South Hill, the VTSS grant. And Mrs. Connie Bucket and Mickey Eisenhower are going to be presenting that.
Okay, good evening. We'd like to talk to you for a few minutes about the VTSS grant that we have received for our schools. And, Brooke, you can go ahead to the, we'll see if we can operate this. A component of the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support is the Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, our PBIS, and some of you may have heard of PBIS. And it's a nationally-recognized approach to supporting positive academic and behavioral outcomes for students. It's not a specific curriculum, but it provides a framework that aids schools in defining, teaching, and supporting appropriate student behavior. And I'm sure that you all have probably heard through different meetings that we have some significant behaviors that we deal with in our schools every day. So this is a new approach that we are trying to implement for our students. Research, research shows that chronic misbehavior decreases the time available for instruction. It traditionally, traditionally significant behaviors are sent to administration and they're handled through in-school or out-of-school suspension, and those do not always give us the desired outcomes. So, they often give us a worse outcome, and they actually support that negative behavior. And suspension often just provides us a break, although suspension is at times necessary, but it is not always the answer to all of our problems. And how will the VTSS help us at our schools? We'll be able to alter the environment that our students learn in. We'll be able to teach them what's expected. We'll be able to acknowledge appropriate behavior and provide our students and our faculty and our staff with staff development to support that new instruction.
Okay. How do we plan to implement this program? We'll be creating teams within our schools. And when creating those teams, we'll be establishing behavioral expectations for students and staff as well. We'll be creating spaces that will meet the needs of students and the behavioral issues that they may have, such as sensory rooms or sensory spaces within the classrooms. Part of our work with these teams, we will be digging into looking at more trauma-sensitive classrooms, doing some book studies that will help teachers to understand how to meet the needs of students that are having behavioral difficulties. We will be intentionally planning things. We will actually be working with two coaches that we have, one from DOE and one from T-TAC as well. Next slide, Brooke. The VTSS team, we will start to identify three to five school-wide expectations of appropriate behaviors. We will identify the key locations. So, looking at the behavioral data that we already have with, with previous discipline records, we will determine what the specific behaviors were, maybe what areas those behaviors occurred in as well. We will start to instruct students on expectations. We will develop a system of positive reinforcements as well, other than just the negative. We will continue to collect our data, and we will also be informing our parents. You also have with you a brief brochure that will outline a few more points concerning PBIS. Any questions?
Sounds like you did a good job. Thank you. Okay, our second presentation is good news for us. I've asked Mr. Taylor and Ms. Corliss Thompson to come up and share the information that we were successful in one of our applications for Chase City to again have a 21st Century Grant.
Good evening, Chairman Ritchie, board members, and Mr. Nichols. Mrs. Thompson and I are here tonight to announce a bit of good news. On August 10th, Chase City Elementary received news that we have been awarded the 21st Century Communities, Community Centers Learning Grant for the 2018-19 school year. Our school has been awarded $200,000 to implement remediation and enrichment programs at our school. Since the notification, Ms. Thompson and I have been working with the site coordinator to make plans to carry out the grant. We were just talking a few minutes ago, planning for staffing and what kind of activities we want to provide for the students. Like in years past, we'll have teachers, parent professionals, and also this year we were able to bring back the homework helpers. Those are high school students who actually come to our school and help with homework and help with tutoring. Hopefully, by having the high school students here, it'll help with our teacher problem because it may inspire teachers to go into the education field. Our program will consist of two components. There'll be a morning tutoring component starting at 7:00 a.m., and then we'll have an after-school remediation from 3:15 to 5:00 o'clock. Our primary focus will be on literacy and numeracy foundation and strengthening those skills and enrichment activities such as gardening, STEM, and culinary arts. We're also planning field trips that reinforce history and science concepts as well as technology, and we'll have different parent events throughout the year to increase our parental involvement. And I'm standing here tonight to say on behalf of Chase City Elementary that we're excited about this opportunity, and we want to take this opportunity to thank our community co-applicants, division leadership for their support. And I personally want to thank Ms. Thompson for her hard work in securing the grant for Chase City Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. I'm a business teacher at Parkview Middle School, and I am the Mecklenburg County 21st Century Grant Coordinator. I'm also excited to share this news with you. I wrote the grant for Clarksville and Chase City. Unfortunately, we did not receive the grant for Clarksville Elementary, but we scored, Clarksville scored 91% out of 100 on the rubric. And they did not receive the grant due to low numbers and free reduced lunch, which is 59%. And they were already fully accredited. So, that's not a bad thing. They were on the up. The grant process was very competitive this year. Eighty applications were submitted. Out of eighty, only 29 were awarded. Only two out of Region 8, and only seven of the 29 received $200,000. Chase City was the one out of Region 8, one of the two out of Region 8, and there were one of the seven that got $200,000. So, we're very excited about that. My role and my responsibility as the Grant County Coordinator will be to ensure that we implement all the policies and procedures and fulfill all the requirements that the state requires us to do through a 21st Century Grant, to ensure that state reporting is done in a timely manner, to make sure that all of our spending is adhered to the budget that is written in the grant, to continue to submit the grant continuation report, which is done each year. Now, we are awarded for this year $200,000, but each year we reapply what they call continuation. And as long as we meet our guidelines in the grant, we will get that $200,000 for at least three years. So, that's $600,000 for a three-year period. I will also assist in the state audit, and the state will come in and audit the first year the grant is being implemented. And I have been through two, two audit processes because I was the site coordinator at Parkview Middle for seven years. And each of those orders, we were in full compliance with what the state required us to do. So, I'm prepared to really work with Mr. Taylor and his site coordinator and get our information together. In addition, as Mr. Taylor stated, we need support from everyone to ensure that our programs are successful. And Chase City is fortunate to have Southside Virginia Community College as the co-applicant, and Dr. Chad Patton is our contact person. At Southside, they will provide workshops for our parents as well as our teachers, and the workshop, classes will be on computer, literacy, and if they want, if they want to get GED. In addition, it will provide campus tours for students, and the parents can come along and visit the campus. In addition to having Southside Virginia Community College as our co-applicant, we also have Virginia Cooperative Extension, and they're willing to work with our parents in gardening, nutrition, reading, and character education. And their other business partner is the Center for Energy Education. I was excited because they are going to provide a program on solar energy. They're going to work with our students on solar energy products, career exploration, and job training for the parents. So, we're excited about that, and we're excited that we had this good news to share with you. And again, I want to thank you all for the support. And as stated by Helen Keller, alone, we can do so little, but together, we can do so much. And that is proven by the support we have gotten for this program. Thank you.
And congratulations to both of you for the hard work and effort that's paying off. We really do appreciate it. Next, we have a report from Ms. Rogers, who's going to be talking with us about the history adoption for the elementary schools this year.
Good evening. Tonight, you have a quote in your board docs for Five Pons Press for History for Grades 3 and 4. There were changes to the elementary history SOLs. Our teachers reviewed these textbooks. They currently use Five Pons Press, but the changes in the SOLs warranted them needing the most updated version of the textbooks in order to have and meet and be completely aligned with the SOLs. So, we did quote out textbooks for both Grades 3 and 4 in History for the elementary school. This quote is for information and also vote tonight if you wish, so that we can go ahead and place that order and get those books in the schools as soon as possible. Are there any questions?
Did you have any parents come over?
Only had one. Did have one come and review the textbooks.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. And she will be working with Dr. Scales to give us an update on our accreditation issues. And you're very enthusiastic. I think it was headline papers.
Yes, I'm going to try not to smile so hard, but I'm very excited tonight to come forward and share our accreditation and SOL scores with you tonight. This is just a reminder of the accreditation benchmarks. These are the benchmarks that have been in place for years. English at 75% or higher, math at 70, science at 70, and history at 70. And high schools are also fully accredited if students achieve pass rates of 75% or higher in English and 7, and 70% or higher in math, science, and history. And of course, they always have the graduation completion index as part of their accreditation. These are the old guidelines. Moving forward, it looks a little more like this, where the state has come in and added some levels. You have Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3. So, the English combined rate is still at 75% to have that green Level 1, and math combined rate is also at 70%. You will notice on here that history is no longer showing. History is no longer a part of Virginia State Accreditation. While we are still currently taking history SOL tests, they do not affect our overall accreditation rating. Science is also one here at 70%. And if we maintain those same accreditation benchmarks that were on the previous slide, we have Level 1 all the way down. On the next slide, I'm sorry, Dr. Scales is going to do the next slide.
One of the things we're also looking at are the differences between the, between the gender gap, the gaps between minorities. And one of, and we have the three different levels there that, thank goodness, all our schools are doing very, very well in those areas for English and in math. You can go ahead and move forward. For the high schools, the biggest thing is, the biggest thing is really, really important now is the graduation index. The graduation index and the dropout rates are pretty much based on a cohort. And what a cohort is, is you're looking, you're tracking students from the ninth grade through the 12th grade year. And the numbers that we'll be looking at this afternoon, in just a few minutes, will be from the graduating class of 2018 as far as their cohort, and also, also there's a three-year rate that's also looked at as well. But all right now, those things are doing, have gone very, very well. Chronic absenteeism is one that's new, that's really being, being emphasized in the accreditation rating, as well as the career and career readiness for the schools, which is also now a part of the five Cs and the profile of the new high school, new Virginia graduate, excuse me.
Okay, so when you look at the individual schools, we left the last several years up there just for comparison, but you can see for Chase City Elementary, pass rate in English reading of an 80, 81 in math, 82 in Virginia Studies. That asterisk just means that doesn't really count for accreditation, but we still wanted to share those scores with you, and 89 in science. For Clarksville, we have 82 in English, 88 math, 95 in Virginia Studies, and 87 in science. Y'all can say yay all you want. This is worth celebrating. La Crosse Elementary, 80 in English, 88 math, 77 in Virginia Studies, and 94 in science. And South Hill Elementary, 85 in English, math 91, Virginia Studies 91, and science 88. So, you can see that we are Level 1 on our all-students across the board. We were green. We do have a couple, we have several schools, pretty much all of our schools, that still need to work on some of those achievement gaps that Dr. Scales mentioned, in particular with our sped students, but we fall in the yellow category, so we are still considered accredited as long as we do not have too many and we do not end up in the red category. So, that is something we're going to continue to watch that group. But we're very pleased that in our all-student category, we are green across the board. And I will say that this was the year that we got to decide whether we wanted to go under the old accreditation rating or the new accreditation rating, where it factors in growth. All of my elementary schools would have made it either way. They made it with or without the growth factor in there.
Again, the good news, starting off with Bluestone Middle School, as you can see, all the ratings, and most of the ratings, if you look at them, have gone, have increased. All their, all their numbers on, for this past year was an increase for the 2017-18 school year. Good job, too, Bluestone Middle. Now, Parkview Middle, again, another excellent job. All the, all the SOLs in the 80, in the mid, in the 80% range. Again, fantastic job by our middle school staff. And again, you can see the, you can see the progress along the previous three years as far as, along all this, all the content areas. Moving on to Bluestone High School, they have, they've made all the accreditation ratings. One of the things at the bottom as far as the graduation matrix, 92% that is above the state rate, the state rate overall is 89%. So, again, they are above and beyond, and they've met all the criteria for state accreditation for schools. And Parkview High School is the same, again exceeded the graduation cohort at 92%. And again, most of the score, all the scores and things are acceptable among the state of Virginia for accreditation, again fully accredited. Last but not least, we are one of the few children's divisions. We are one of the few school divisions in the state that is fully accredited from top to bottom. So, that's again, great job to our teachers, staff, administrators, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, school board. Thank you all. We've got, we've done an excellent job over the last year to make us a fully accredited school division.
Any questions? Any questions from the board? I would like to just add, there were a couple of the scores of the SOLs that we did see some dips in, and when part of that, we know is because we had teachers that left us mid-year last year. And that had significant impact on several of the scores that we had in place. As we're looking at this current year, one of the things that I'm very pleased to announce is that we are starting out the year with, we don't have all teachers in place, but we're better off starting this year than we were last year. And we're very, very thankful for that and continuing to work on the teachers that we need. I'll also add, as we're looking at the accountability standards and moving to a new accreditation rating, that the new accreditation ratings are growth models. They're not just hit-target models. And so, what I have asked for all of the schools to do is to look at each of the four categories that are now required under profile of a graduate. And we've talked about that over and over and over. There's your career literacy, there's the academics, there's the skill development, and the community interaction. We have to establish some baseline data and, and expectations for growth every year from now on in those four areas. And so, the schools are very active in looking at which areas they want to pinpoint and moving forward in those areas and work toward those goals. And it will be very difficult because you're always looking to get better and better and better. So, you know, that's, it's a tall challenge. We're glad to be there, fully accredited, but we know we've still got a lot of work to do. And we're thankful for all of our teachers, our counselors, our administrators, that have worked so hard in being able to do this. We give them a big round of thanks for what they're doing. So, thank you very much. We have a technology update from Mrs. Hatcher.
Good evening, Mr. Ritchie, board members, Mr. Nichols. I have several updates from technology as you've seen, as you have seen on board docs. First is the technology plan. It's a five-year plan, 2018 to 2023. This was established by the DOE. They provided us with a plan and a guide to be used at the division level. This plan is a living document. That means that we can change it as we see fit over the next five years, add to it and take away as we need to. We followed the state's guide and worked hard to ensure that we are striving to follow their standards and continue to grow as a division. To begin, we worked on a new vision and mission for the Technology Department and made sure that our vision and mission supports the plan as well as the students and the faculty and staff. We then met as a committee to work on the goals and indicators and as well as the actions that were provided by the state. I'd like to take a minute just to thank a few of the people that have worked on the plan, as well as they're going to continue to work on, they have committed to work on the plan in the future as well. Josh Adams, Wanda Bailey, Amanda Bowen, Gary Cyfers, Crystal Elmore, Ron Goodwin, Cameron Hawkins, Stephanie Lickte, Tracy Rogers, Matt Rulie, Ashley Smith, Wesley Swain, Fred Taylor, Ramona Tomko, and Jason Winter. Some of the state standards that you will find in the plan include enhanced personalized equitable student learning with technology, support innovative professional learning with technology, create cultures of change through innovative leadership practices, and maintain a secure and robust infrastructure. We worked with these standards. We embraced them, and we also used them to make some of our own goals for our division. These goals include: provide technology and accommodations to assist with various learning styles, support data-driven decisions using technology to evaluate and improve teaching and learning, advance the efficiency of administrative responsibilities, offer skills that provide students with workplace readiness skills, and promote the growth of lifelong learning, engage students in meaningful and purposeful experiences through the effective use of technology, provide faculty and staff with professional development opportunities to include emerging technologies, internet safety, and digital citizenship, and instructional best practices. And last but not least, provide a high-quality and efficient customer service to all stakeholders. We will continuously revisit the plan, make changes according to emerging technologies and best practices as we go through the next five years. Any questions about the plan?
Before you go on, I was just going to see if Ms. Alga could turn the light back on because we're not looking at the screen anymore, and we want to see you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is some summer updates, some new devices that we've put in place. We're really excited. We had a super busy summer, and I think you'll be excited about everything that we did. We put kindergarten, we put iPads in kindergarten. They're one-to-one. We also put first grade Chromebooks in the first grade. They are also one-to-one Chromebooks in those grades. And a big thank you to Ms. Pfeffer for helping us with those funds. We deployed two labs for the CTE department. We deployed 55 new active panels through the help of the Board of Supervisors. With that refresh, we did 35 Promethean boards and 20 clear-touch boards. This is a pilot that we are doing at the schools. We returned approximately 670 leased devices from the second and sixth grade, and in return, we deployed the same amount of devices to the second and sixth grade. So, we took out the old and put in new. We also did a phone project with Mr. Dalton where we deployed approximately 300 phones. There's new phones in every elementary school classroom, and we did phone-for-phone at the secondary level, central office, and transportation. And last but not least, we've included a list of devices that are antiquated and are no longer work and are usable in our environment, and are asking that you deem these items surplus.
And that will be in tonight's surplus vote.
Yes. Yes. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hatcher. And speaking of surplus, we brought this to your attention, but Bill May, Mr. Mayhew is asking about transportation, and I'm going to give him a chance to speak with us about that.
Good evening, Chairman Ritchie, Superintendent Nichols, board members. I come before you tonight to ask that you declare six school buses and six vehicles surplus so we can offer them to the public for sale. These vehicles and buses have gotten to the point where it's not feasible to put any more money in trying to keep them running or get them running. We've got two or three of the buses that won't run at all, a couple of them, you know, using a lot of oil. So, my thoughts were that if we could offer them out for bid. We have a Concord Baptist Church camp. They're interested in maybe getting one or two, and Lake Gas and Fire Department, they're interested in maybe purchasing one as well. Any questions?
Thank you. One quick, I'm sorry, one quick question. The, the buses or vehicles that we do not sell in that surplus, what happens to those?
Will you settle for scrap now?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. There are also, as we're talking about surpluses, there's an issue that we don't have much storage room anymore in several of our elementary schools, and... storage room anymore in several of our elementary schools and um, Mr. Dalton was gonna be here to represent the elementary schools that that's happening, but he's had a little bit of an emergency taken away tonight. So he's given me the information, we've got roughly uh, sixty, I believe, uh, violins at Lacrosse Elementary and then keyboards at Lacrosse Elementary and South Hill Elementary that, and Clarksville Elementary that we don't have storage for anymore, and when we have the surplus sale, we would like to put those items in the surplus sale as well. So if you have any questions, now's the time to ask about that.
Have they been offered to other schools to see if they wanted them?
Within our, if, if, in order for them to be available to other schools outside of our system, it's my understanding that we have to surplus them and then we can work with them on offering them that way.
I was talking about within the school system.
There has been some exchange within the system for some of our instruments, yes. Any other questions? Okay. All right, we are, you will have a chance tonight to vote on a, a request for a overnight field trip to Blacksburg by the middle school, Future Farmers of America. And then as well, South Hill Elementary has an overnight field trip request to Knoxville, Tennessee in May for the um, DI. It's not gonna come to me, what's the DI stand for? Destination Imagination, yeah. So um, those will be items for tonight, and then we have a policy update as we usually do at the month from Ms. Alga.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and Mr. Nichols. You have in your packet this evening several policies related specific to, specifically to compliance officers within the division, and in order to keep those compliant officers current with regard to staffing changes and so on, these policies have no content changes, only compliance officers. So, um, we are presenting that this evening for information as well as action, and I've included the last document on the board docs for you as a summary of all of the areas compliance officers that we do have in the division. Anyone have any questions? It's for information and action this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And having gotten through each of those, I do have several items to, to bring to your attention. First of all, as you all are well aware, last Monday, we had our first day of school for students. It went very well, all reports that I have gotten from each of the schools has been that that the teachers were all very ready and the students seemed to be anxious to get back to school after summer break. I'm sure they weren't all laughing along the way, but they, they certainly did well in coming back and were excited. All of them reported well, of course, one of the ones that drew a lot of attention was we had put in the extra track at the um, South Hill Elementary School, and I was there to see the parents as they were coming in to that part of it, and it went very well. In fact, several of them even rolled down the window and gave me a thumbs up that it was, they were pleased with it. We're very thankful to the, the Chief Bowen and the South Hill Police Department who were there, particularly for the exiting of the persons as they were getting back out onto the old Plank Road into Highway One. We've had some new signs out there, some new directions, but um, Ms. Eisenhower, you can correct me, but what I'm hearing even by Wednesday, the exiting was going very smoothly. And it's worked itself out very well. So we now have the buses back over in the area where the buses need to be and the parents unloading and then reloading back where the, they're supposed to be doing their work, and so we're very, very pleased with that particular part of it. Many thanks to Mr. Dalton and all the ones who put their minds together to come up finally with a plan that worked for the school. I'd also like to point out that um, we have now had the Ward Burton Foundation that has come and is working with our elementary science teachers on some special hands-on applications for SOL development, and that's very exciting. We're, we're piloting the program with the Burton Foundation and um, we're excited about that. Plus, we've had meetings now with the new Southside Food Bank. I don't know how many of you've had a chance to learn of the, the large food hub that's going in, where the old Bob Martins florist used to be right beside the theater, but that has huge opportunities for local farmers, local growers, and as they put practically a million dollars worth of grants together to put many options for education and learning and opportunities to have local food distribution, um, they've been very thoughtful in including Mecklenburg County School students at the elementary, middle, and high school level in that. So again, particularly for our new environmental science career field, we think this is gonna be a huge, a huge program that's gonna be a benefit for that. I'm also pleased to announce that uh, today I got a letter from College Board, and we are being included in an opportunity for some research that they're doing, but it's going to give our sophomores and juniors at both high schools the opportunity to take the PSAT at no cost whatsoever. And that will be a very big incentive for our students to be able to have that, that option because um, there's a lot, even for students who would be going directly into careers with credentials, there's a huge amount of information that's online through College Board for those students and helping them improve. So, we're very thankful and we will be partaking of that opportunity for our students, and I'll be announcing that as the College Board representative is with us um, on the meeting in September the sixth at Bluestone as well. A little bit of an update on the school building, um, I'm having a meeting on Friday with the, some representatives from VDOT, I'm hopeful that this is gonna be a meeting, I think that Mr. Carter and I have both been invited to, I don't, they didn't say exactly what it was about, but hopefully we'll have this meeting and it'll be the next step that we're looking for in order to be able to move forward with the purchase. And um, of course, that's one of the issues that we've had to deal with, and I also know that we, we voted, or the Board of Supervisors opened the door for the engineers to go out and begin doing the geo-samplings there, and I can tell you, because I've been over to see, they are busy doing that. We've got indications now of where the low um, water shed areas are and things of that nature, so that's progressing, and I like to think, and I have talked with Mr. Carter, we're hopeful that we will be in a position and sometime, at least by September, to have the land purchased for the new building. So, that's a hope, that's nothing official, that's just where we are with where we, what we've seen taking place in the last couple of days. So, that's important. I also wanna bring to the attention a matter that I know has been on, very much on the minds of the students and parents at Bluestone and at Parkview about the um, opportunity to earn their associate degree through the dual enrollment credit. The, the dual enrollment opportunities, particularly leading to the associate degree, is an, a program that was put in place many years ago, um, trying to promote the idea of college-going activities among our students. It has been one that has been very successful in this area because um, many students took advantage through the years of planning in that direction. However, there are some components of the program that, that make it very difficult to sustain. The primary issue is that when you have a dual enrollment program, the community college is getting their tax base for the classes and the school is getting ours because they are our students taking both what is to be both a high school credit and a college credit. In the past, the teachers for the dual enrollment classes are high school teachers that have earned a master's degree plus eighteen graduate credits in the area that they are teaching. In the last few years, the idea of the dual enrollment option has moved into other areas of the state beside ours. And it's been put together in a different way than it's been put together in ours. Uh, our community college in Southside and the school divisions that it serves were able to work out an agreement and the, that so far has sustained the option for um, the school division to hire the teachers and hire, and have the place for them to be, and the community college granted the credit based on the academic prowess of the teacher as they were teaching and had a master's degree. We find ourselves in a position at this point where in a teacher shortage, it is harder and harder to be able to find teachers who have the master's degree with the eighteen hours in the content area. And we've even found, not only in Mecklenburg County, but in some of the other surrounding counties, that as the process has gotten to be more and more one that other school divisions have wanted to bring into their schools, that there have been some significant questions by universities about whether um, the students are getting the same level of rigor at the high school dual enrollment level as they're getting at the community college when they take the classes at the community college. And therefore, um, many of the higher levels, the universities have been negligent in taking some of those as the regular class, they've taken them as electives. The legislature got involved in this last year and has been trying to put forth legislation that has required this, the higher, the colleges have been pushing back, and the community college has been put in a place where they have had to look more specifically at the transcripts of the persons who have been teaching the classes. And in doing so, they have identified some of the teachers and saying, we're sorry you have a hot, a master's degree and you may have graduate credit in education to teach science or to teach math, but you don't actually have the biology graduate credits or the the credits in English that are specific to English. And so they have disallowed, I don't know that that's a real good word, but they've disallowed some of the teachers who had been given credit to be able to do that from uh, doing it anymore. And that put us in a bind this year, we actually hired a couple of teachers with the idea that they had taught for the community college or governor's school before, and then we found out that because of the credentialing issues that had been pulled back. I'll give uh, huge credit to our principals at the high school for doing everything they could to try to attract teachers to come in and to our central office staff that has gone to the community college and said, if we can't find them, can you help us find them, can you provide other services for us? And in many cases, what they found was gonna prove to be significantly costly for students and their parents, um, or for the school system. We don't want this year's seniors that have been working so hard for earning an associate degree to not have the opportunity. So, I went to the community college and talked with Dr. Roberts, and what we've been able to work out as our only option, we have a lack of teachers for calculus at Bluestone, for biology at Parkview, and for the twelfth grade English at Bluestone. They're giving us the opportunity to have the teacher, and I'll use the term teacher of record, that is at Parkview, um, who is certified to teach the English, to be able to connect, she has three classes of the English that she has to teach for dual enrollment. She'll be able to connect during the period that Bluestone has in English through two-way video, set up the curriculum and oversee what's going on in the classroom, but the teacher that's teaching the class at Bluestone will still be able to work with them in all of the material so that they will have a quality class at Bluestone. We have a teacher at Bluestone who is certified still for the biology. The students need all of the class, both the biology and the English in order to be able to earn the associate degree. We don't have that teacher at Parkview, but in, and if we transfer the student, the teacher from Bluestone to Parkview, then she would have all three classes that are required and the numbers of students that we have at Parkview to teach that all year and be connected to our teacher who is, who did teach for the community college not long ago, but they drew back the credential. She would transfer to Bluestone and be able to work with them and give good quality instruction, but have the oversight from the two-way video. And it has to be worked out that way because we simply have three classes that one would be required to be two-way from Parkview to Bluestone. If we kept them that way, the other teacher would be teaching biology one for two classes and only have one dual enrollment biology, which is actually a second year, it's not the main biology class, it's a second year of science for them. So, that's the way we would have to do it to be able to get the credits for the students to be able to get the classes necessary for their associate degree. We are working with the community college and being able to provide the math credit required at Bluestone for the associate degree. Next year, and I, I will say this now and I, I just see it coming down the road, we will no longer be able to offer sufficient numbers of credits with teachers involved for students in junior, sophomore, freshman classes to be able to earn the associate degree. And a part of that is that we understand from the community college system that whereas the stu, the parents and students have not had to pay for a class before in this process, they are going to start charging extra tuition next year for all students. Ultimately, that tuition is expected to be fifty dollars per uh, course credit that would be there, and that's a cost that would have to be passed on to the parents and to the students. So we anticipate, and, and having anticipated this before, and I mentioned this last year at the college bound, or the college night at Parkview, that these issues are forcing all of the school divisions in Southside to reconsider how we make promises about the earning of an associate degree and cause us to have to look back at for the recommendations and requirements for advanced academics at the high school level, providing the opportunity for students to earn the advanced placement classes uh, in, instead of the dual enrollment. This will have no impact on the governor's school, the governor's school is a separate entity for that, um, and for the classes in the career and technical programs that we send students from our schools to the community college for welding or things of that nature, they're still set up as dual enrollment, we're paying for those now. So, there, there are many issues that are involved, we do wanna do everything we can to help those students that are seniors this year, but we are limited, this is our only option to be able to offer that program for them for this year. And I know that many are concerned, I've seen some of the, or heard people talking about, we don't wanna lose that option for this year's seniors, you know, that's why we've come up with the option that we have. And I don't know, in, in giving that information, if there's comments from the board or anybody else, uh, but I, that's where we are right now. Does anybody have?
It's, it's uh, yeah, I just, it's, it's just a shame that we've gotten to this point. It's, it's sad for the kids, but it's the only opportunity, I mean, I've, I've uh, been involved since last week trying with this, trying to, with superintendent, trying to figure out something, and it just, there's no way out of the mess, we're in a mess. We, had we, had we gone to a, and built a, a central high school years ago like we should have, we wouldn't be having these problems today probably because we'd all be under one roof and we wouldn't be switching back and forth from one end of the county to the other. I mean, we, we've done this with uh, with auto mechanics, we've done it with all these other things and it's, it hadn't worked and it's still not working. So, uh, I just pray that we get a, a school built soon so we can eliminate this jacking of kids and teachers and, and all of those things, because it, the losers are our children and that's a shame.
And again, um, I have had many calls, especially from the Parkview end where biology was concerned, and I know Mr. Nichols and I have talked on many occasions about And I know Mr. Nichols and I have talked on many occasions about the remedy to be able to fix this situation. Again, I agree with Mr. Edwards. We are in a bad predicament. With that being said, the last two summers, I have taken an opportunity to talk to parents of children who graduated with an associate's degree, especially the ones who declared their major and went in as a junior. And because the rigor was not there, like it probably ought to have been, these students are lost by going in on that college level, declaring their major, and three or four months into it, I've had parents tell me, "Gavin, my child wasn't prepared," or either they spent all this time doing this and, "Look, now they don't want to do it. They're not interested anymore." So it's just a waste of money, it's a waste of time. And again, I just feel like that some of the community colleges put us in a bad spot by, you know, accepting endorsements, not accepting them. We've had teachers leave there, come to the high school and teach. So again, we are in a bad place, but I just want to assure the parents that this board is aware of it. I think I can speak for all of us that we are aware of the problem, and thanks to Mr. Nichols, we have come up with a remedy for this year, especially for those who have reached out about biology. And thank you for what you've done to remedy this problem because, again, it's our kids who are suffering.
Anyone else?
I know as a parent of three children in seventh, eighth, and 10th grade, that affects me as a parent as well, but I understand the predicament we're in and that we're still going to provide through AP, there's still going to be opportunities for higher education, maybe not the entire associate's degree, but still opportunities that I'm, as a parent, I'm thankful for, that we're still going to provide what we can provide, but doing it at the level we're doing it. I can completely understand how that's just untenable to continue something like that. And, you know, like I said, as a parent, I understand that. It's gonna, my kids won't get associate's degrees, and that's fine. I'm worried about their high school education more than that anyway, so.
I have one thing. I can't support the transfer of the biology teacher without them guaranteeing that the teacher will at least come back and meet sometime during the week or within the month with the students that are going to be at Bluestone because the ones at Parkview are going to have this teacher full-time. The ones at Bluestone would not have the opportunity to talk face-to-face with this teacher. And I just cannot support the transfer of the biology teacher, and that's my opinion only.
But the Bluestone students will have a biology teacher.
Yes.
Just not the...
Certified.
Just not the credentials, the college. The college has been, become a little difficult, and I can't explain that on some of this credentialing process, and I don't understand what all is happening there, but they make that call and they put us in a difficult situation on this one.
My concern is that I wish we could have settled this before getting this close to, or actually not getting this close, into school. Anything can be worked out, but it's the timing that is of concern to me.
Anyone else? All right, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Superintendent? Move on to our committee reports. The Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee, we already talked about that, some of the...
No report yet.
No report yet. On that, the finance committee, Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee met this afternoon at five o'clock. We do, we've approved the bills. We are adding two bills that need to go in to this payment. It's the RDA and the unemployment, and those will need to be paid before our next meeting in September. So we need to make sure we include those in this month's bills. But we do make a motion that we approve the bills as presented.
Okay, thank you. The school safety committee, any reports? No? The gifted, talented, specialized?
Yes, I have some information from governor's school. I have a report from the director, and at the present time, there are 181 governor's school members, eighty-seven, sixty-seven at Alberta, and 114 in Keesville. Also have the scheduled teachers, finance report, a letter if you care to read that was sent to every parent and student that goes to governor's school, and information if you want to get alerts, like if you want to know if the weather is going to keep them from going to school, information on how to sign up for that. And also, I'd like to announce that one of our English teachers from Parkview did join the governor's school faculty. Ms. Kit, Wendy Kit, is going to be teaching English in Alberta. Just coming here.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. How about the CTE Career and Technical Committee, anything? I don't see Mr. Seifert's on. The Athletics Committee?
Yes, Chairman. It's sports time again. We have volleyball, cheer, golf, cross-country, teams that are going strong right now. Fishing, we've talked about fishing teams. Since the board announced that we're going to do a fishing team for the county, we've had a group outside, inside the community say that they want to do a fishing program as well. So we're going to be moving forward with two fishing programs. One is going to be in the county, and one will give other kids opportunities to fish as well. The names that I've been given for the fishing teams are Mecklenburg County Youth Bass Masters and Mecklenburg High School Anglers. They're going to be the two fishing programs that are going to be moving forward. Friday night, Friday night light start with Parkview facing Amelia at home, Bluestone facing Fluvanna at home. And the following Friday is going to be King of the County game, August 31st, in which Bluestone will face Parkview. Every year's been very competitive. I'm hearing some things that this year should be another competitive game, and I'm hearing a lot of grumbling as to who's going to win this year. So I would encourage all the faculty and staff and anyone in the community, come out. Come out, support our volleyball teams, support our cross-country, and support our football program. Those kids love to see you out there. They sacrificed a lot all summer getting prepared. And come cheer your team on, be it Bluestone or Parkview. But I, there's some, a lot of talk this year about the King of the County game, so come out and enjoy it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin. Let's see, there is no report from the Instruction Committee this month either. Now we are to our public input portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. At this time, matters may be publicly brought to the attention of the board and administration. Public comments at board meetings are just one of many avenues of communication, and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public we represent. The public is invited to sign up to speak. The clerk of the school board will write down your name, contact information, and the topic that you wish to speak about. The public is allowed up to six minutes at most meetings to express their views. Please respect that time limitation. It will be enforced. Please understand that it may not be possible to immediately respond to your questions. As a reminder, it is inappropriate at a public meeting to make personal attacks, to be defamatory, or to disparage individuals or identifiable groups. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to beginning your comment, please state your name to the board. Mr. Roger Moore?
You have to forgive me, I'm nervous as anything. I've never spoken before, grouped before. Mr. Nichols, Superintendent, the board, thank you for hearing me, but I would like to talk to you about the soccer program that I read in the paper, that they're thinking of canceling in Parkview for the springtime. They say that the boys and girls should not be playing soccer in the springtime, that it costs too much. I have a way of lowering that cost. One coach for both teams. The kids go together, okay? The boys' group and the girls' group go to the same field at the same time on one bus. You don't need two coaches. You need a coach and an assistant coach. I have been coaching for 38 years. I have the girls' team at Parkview, okay? And now to read that it's possible that it's going to be disbanded, I don't think it should be. Ladies and gentlemen, you have a program right now where you take teachers or your coaches, but you're not, with 38 years, I paid a lot of money to become a certified coach. I'm certified to coach high school, college, okay? I take pride in the work I do. I've coached a lot of kids, thousands of kids here in Mecklenburg County over the last 22 years, okay? I don't think soccer should be taken out of the program for Parkview. Bluestone played about 10 games. Our athletic director for the last two seasons didn't set up any type of program. We played, Parkview played Bluestone twice, two years in a row. I think we should get together and maybe have a better understanding of letting Parkview go the same places that Bluestone is going. I really feel the kids need an out, okay? They need something to do, and I think soccer's a good program, okay? I've coached, like I said, I've coached a lot of kids. I've been around Mecklenburg County for 22 years. I was going to be the coach at Parkview, but something happened that I was not, okay? That's something that I'm not supposed to be derogatory about. Anyway, your son, Mr. Nichols, played my son, Patrick, okay? My son, my grandkids, they're all excellent players. I have made a lot of children in this county very good, okay? I take pride, like I said, in what I do, and I think Mecklenburg County could be a state champion if they start putting more effort into making a coach a soccer coach and not a teacher, okay? Right now, we have teachers at the high school in Parkview and at the middle school, and neither one is qualified to coach. One was a track team, a track coach that came from North Carolina. She doesn't know anything, you know, knowledgeable about the game. I train children to be good. I don't play to win, I play to train. As the kids get better over the years, they will win. And that's how the shorts, excuse me, that's how the sport should be played. Thank you for your time, thank you for listening to me. Have a good day.
All right.
Anybody have any questions, by the way? No?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
I failed to sign up if it's possible.
Sure, that's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, I didn't think about it when I came in. Dr. Nichols and Chairman and Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, I had this all printed up, but I do better sometimes just talking, so. I'll be honest with you, I'm not real sure it makes any difference what I said, what I say tonight because I think Dr. Nichols kind of addressed the issue of the schools and the DE curriculum. And I guess, just to...
One second, please. Would you please state your name?
I apologize, I apologize. My name is Kevin Allgood. I'm a citizen of Clarksville, Mecklenburg County. I have two children at Bluestone High School. One is a senior this year, and it's going to be affected by this program. Thank you. I apologize for that.
That's okay.
I guess a couple of things that I would just like to point out is, number one, this was a problem that, if I remember correctly, I lose track of time, but if I remember correctly, it's probably been about a year ago that I remember reading in the paper that this board was aware that we were going to have some issues come up with this DE program. We didn't have teachers. Part of that problem is, obviously, you guys know part of the problem, we don't pay them enough. And so how do we attract good teachers without paying them enough? And it's hard, it's hard. We're willing to spend millions of extra dollars to go out and buy a piece of property when we didn't need to. We could have taken that money that we're working on. Now I'm fully supportive of the school, I really am. I really am in support of the school system, I've spoken in support of that. But we were willing to take millions of dollars, extra money, that we didn't need to spend, and spend it to get a piece of property and have to run utilities to it when we didn't have to do that, when we could have taken that money and used it for the teachers that deserve more pay in our county. And our students deserve to have those teachers. And now if I understand correctly, maybe I'm wrong, but if we had our English teacher still at our school, at Bluestone High School, we already have our biology teacher there that can teach DE. Now, I may be incorrect about this, but if that's the case, would the students from Parkview have to come to Bluestone? I mean, would they be teleconference down there? If that's the case, our students, if we had had our teacher, English teacher, that is now at Parkview, and our biology teacher, then we probably would have this room full of people from Parkview High School complaining. I just don't think it's fair for our kids, and it's a problem that I know this board knew was coming. And I agree with Mr. Palmer, this issue should have been addressed a long time ago. We shouldn't be here a week into the school system and trying to figure out what we're going to do to teach our kids. And I'm sorry, I sent out an email today, it was late, and, you know, I could, I could bring up a lot of other issues, but it sounds like that this issue has already been resolved. But I just think it's a travesty for our kids at Bluestone, and I feel bad for them. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we are now to our action items. The minutes for, let's see, the minutes for the regular school board meeting held July 17, 2018. Do I have a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on July 17, 2018?
So move.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Abstain.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to our special called meeting, do I have a motion that the school board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on July 24, 2018?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Garner, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Abstain.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Abstain.
Mr. Campbell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain.
Can we get, can we do another? If it's an abstain, it's supposed to be an explanation of why you abstain.
So the meaning we weren't all abstained?
Yeah.
Right. Yes.
Four of you to get in the pass, one of us will probably have to vote in favor, so we have a majority.
Right. This is the, this is the closing?
This was, this was special closing.
To the issue of the lacrosse.
Oh, this is the lacrosse, okay. Madam Clerk? Do the roll call, yes.
Sure. Mr. Sturdivan?
No, it wasn't the lacrosse thing, it was your evaluation.
That's what I was thinking.
July 24.
Yes.
That's right, I can vote for that because I was there.
You were here.
I was here. I got that in the, I got that in the last meeting confused.
All right, I'm sorry, could you do a roll? We have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Abstain.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Abstain.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain.
Now, we have a recommendation, do we have a recommendation from the finance committee that we approve the bills?
Yes, sir, and again, adding the RDA and the unemployment payments in this month's bills because they will be due prior to our September meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. We have a recommendation from the finance committee that we pay this month's bill in addition to the two extra bills. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, may I have a motion that the school board approves tonight's personnel and recommendations?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, with exception.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
No.
No.
Mr. Edwards?
No.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to our technology surplus, do I have a motion that the School Board approves the technology items for surplus?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, in regards to the musical instruments, may I have a motion that the School Board deems that Clarksville Elementary School and South Hill Elementary School musical instruments as surplus?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, excuse me, a motion from Mr. Edwards, seconded by Ms. Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to the new adoption for the history books for the elementary schools, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the elementary history adoption?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. In regards to the V S B A policy updates, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the updates to V S B A policy, G B, G B A, J F H A, J B, and J F H A, G B A.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right, unto our reminders. September 3, Labor Day, no school. September 12, Parent-Teacher Conference at the high schools from 4:15 to 6:30. September 17, regular school board meeting. September 24, school dismisses at 12 noon for a half, half a teacher workday, or half-day teacher workday. And now we are up to our Board Member remarks. Let me start over here for a change. Mr. Honeycutt, do you have?
Yes, I do want to say congratulations, because we are doing great things in Mecklenburg County. For those of you who are in this room tonight that could see either one of these projection screens, accredited all the way down the line, and our staff, our administrators, everybody, it took a team effort, and you all are to be commended, and I appreciate. And I know I can speak for the rest of the Board in saying that we appreciate what you all did, because we made great strides, and we did it ourselves. So again, it took a village to do this, and I do appreciate it. I do agree with you that this was an issue this year with the DE, but that goes back to funding. It goes back to a lot of different aspects of it. We do have a real problem in Mecklenburg County with paying our teachers and our administrators what they deserve. But unfortunately, it's, we are held by our Board of Supervisors of what this group or this body can spend. And what we're allocated is what we have to live by. And if we go over that, then we're responsible as a Board. I will tell you of a division in Region 8 this year who did just that, overspent their budget. And it wasn't good. And they are receiving some not-so-good consequences for that. But I do feel your pain. Again, I feel like our students are our main priority, and because of the shortage and what is happening, it's, it has happened. But I want to say thank you to Mr. Nichols for finding a solution. It might not be the best solution, but it's a solution that will afford our children an opportunity to graduate with their associates that they will not lose out with that this year. And again, we've got to look at it closer for next year. I praise all of our staff here at Central Office for being ever mindful of what our students need, what our teachers need, what our administrators need. It's a lot of good things happening in Mecklenburg County, and I just want to say thank you for coming out this evening. I agree with you. This room should be full every single month. It should be full of a parent representing their child. It should be standing room only in here every single month. You know, you want to see your children do the best, and in order for that to happen, you've got to be a part of the system. So, you know, don't come up and complain after the fact. We need you here now. So again, you know, I'd love to be able to, in that new school, have that auditorium full. Every month, we'd have to move it there because of the parents that would come out and represent their children. But again, it takes them to do that. So again, thank you, teachers and staff, for what you're doing. Thank you for coming out and speaking this evening. I do appreciate it.
Mr. Campbell? Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I had the opportunity of traveling around to several of our schools at the beginning here, and I have found it to be a smooth operation, as has been stated. I'm very pleased with what I saw in the classrooms. It was neat, it was clean. And I commend our teachers because truly, they're spending a lot of their money to make sure that our students get what they are, what they need. I also want to commend Chase City Elementary. That is a huge success that you all have there, and I really wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Again, I want to thank the parents of all these kids that came up tonight to fight for their kid. But I also like to back Mr. Nichols a little bit. His back was against the wall. He had no other way out but to do this. He had a lot of sleepless nights, because I caused some of them. But it's, he did all he could do, and it's just no other way possible, and it's a shame. But I think it's going to work out okay in the end. At least your child's going to get that number that they need and go on to what they have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffin?
Yes, the big question is whether or not the seniors this year will get the DE credit, and they are. Next year, those kids probably won't. That's the situation we're in. The man that spoke about the soccer at Parkview Middle, that has not come before the Board. I didn't see it in the paper. As far as the Board's concerned, the program goes on. What has happened at Parkview Middle, though, they had an opportunity to partner with Bluestone Middle to travel and play in another league or another division down south. They didn't. And because of that, they have limited games. But that's something they still can do. So it's not a Board's decision, it's whether or not that is addressed at a school level. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Garner?
I'd like to congratulate Fred Taylor on the award that he got. And I will warn him, he's having hot dogs on Thursday, and I'll be there for lunch. Fair one. Congratulate to all the schools that are accredited for this coming year. And I was so glad to hear that the opening of school went smooth at V S B A's. And good luck for the semester. Then we start again next year.
Thank you. And I'd like to commend the principals. I think the schools had a wonderful opening. I know my children are off to a good year, and we're excited about that. Just to, I know that sometimes we beat up on the Board of Supervisors, but just to speak on their behalf a little bit, I think our relationship with them has improved quite a bit, and they've been very cooperative with this school project and funding, additional funding for the school project. And, you know, the big difference between the capital expenditure, and I'm a for teacher raises, believe me, and that's one of our big problems in recruiting teachers, but the big difference between capital expenditures and teacher raises, or is if a teacher raise costs you a million dollars, it costs you a million dollars every year from there on out. A capital expenditure is a one-time deal. So it is a much longer commitment for the Board of Supervisors to do that. We're hoping that they'll support maybe a state-recommended raise, 3% raise this year. We have to support it from our end as well, so we're hoping that they'll support that as well. But I just want to commend the Board of Supervisors in working with us, and that, in the three years we've been here, I feel like the relationship has improved quite a bit, and some mutual respect there. So there is some positive things happening on that front. Does anybody have anything else?
One more.
Yes, Ms. Garner?
The letter from Governor's School, I mean, from the President, Dr. Phil.
Scales, Dr. Scales. All right, thank you, Ms. Garner. All right, if we have no more business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.